All right, so I'm gonna call the order here and open the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. We have two members online who are on our Zoom feed here, and three members present, Mr. Sheehan and Mr. Griffin. Again, via Zoom, we have Mr. Pierce and Mr. Murphy. And I think we'll start with the meeting minutes. We have, yeah, do we have four?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great, thank you. We have four sets of meeting minutes, and Mr. Griffin, do you want to?
A motion on these?
Sure, I move to accept the minutes. Meetings twelve, three dash twenty-four, twelve nineteen, twenty-four, one six twenty-five, and one seven twenty-five. You want them to have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a second, Mr. Sheehan. Now, since we have covered four sets of minutes, just all, any, any discussion, any issues or questions? Mr. Murphy or Mr. Pierce?
No.
Okay. Thank you guys. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have four meeting minutes approved here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on roll call, finding to do.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, you're right, we have online, so just gonna do a roll call. Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Hi.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah.
And the chair is aye. Thanks for reminding us, Deborah, Danielle, whoever. Okay, so we got the minute covered. We're waiting for seven thirty, which is a scheduled public hearing at seven thirty for the floodplain zoning bylaw changes. Our update really, and then we have the time meeting warrant articles discussion. I can start with that too. Three different articles. For us, that is. And they're all the first, you know, three articles, one, two, and three. Barring it to, to opening to the public for any comments or questions. Mr. Murphy or Mr. Pierce, did you have anything you wanted to, you know, bring up regarding the, any of the three articles for the time meeting?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah?
I think we kind of.
Yeah, we have. Sheehan, I'm good, okay. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna cover two, the FEMA one, two, I think, which is in the floodplain district one, Article three, a little bit too, at seven thirty, with the required public hearing for that particular one. So Daniel, I kind of just went around the horn to see if there was any questions among the board on the three articles. There really isn't. We're, we're gonna cover obviously the FEMA update one, but, you know, quasi article three was bad at seven thirty. But I don't know if you had anything to add. I can also open up to the public, because I see there's a few people out here that I don't know, they will do so. But did you have anything, any changes, any updates, comments coming in?
The only change, and I can cover this when we get to the FEMA one, the public hearing, we did receive the aftermath dates.
Right.
So we would be able to, no, I just wanted to ask you if you'd like me to prepare a presentation. I have a very brief overview of each of the slides, same one that I got to the select board last time. But if we can talk more into.
No, I think that's, I was, I'm glad you raised it, because I was gonna bring it up. I think that'd be great, because I, I think it's pretty straightforward and, you know, it seems like you have it all, you know, all, all bumped up here, so.
Do you want any more detail in there, or just?
Did you see another detail that needs to be added? I don't.
Because I can do a more, you know, in depth for each one, if you think I should have it in a way either way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't know what benefit it's just going into more of the, you know, the Poor Home Act, you know, when it's signed into law and when, but, but is that really necessary? Right, the law goes into effect, at least it is, it really stays ADU's February second, so I'm saying, yeah, I don't think that needs to be.
And the full articles are all printed in the frame there, so maybe, you know.
Yeah. I mean, only as it relates to like, people are like, why are we doing this? It will, because there's a lot that was passed in August, so I mean, I mean, as, as much as mentioning that part, I think that's important, so people know a lot, like, why are we here? Because it really is why they're, why we're, we're here, having that special time meeting. It's not to do Articles four, five, six, or whatever, although I guess could be, if this stuff didn't happen. So that, that might be helpful, that it will say, why are we here? But that's all I can think of. So. Yeah, so I'll just open it up to the public, just a few people, and any, anybody that, you can raise your hand, or just, you know, say your name. If you specifically had questions on the three articles, and if it's related to the FEMA ones, you can wait for the hearing, public hearing at seven thirty, and you'll find, because I will cover it more in depth. So let's just say it's the ADU ones, the Articles one and two. Wait a little bit, because it might, trying to raise it, or whatever.
You have one hand up there.
What'd you say, Lauren?
You have a hand up.
Somebody does?
Yep.
Okay, Daniel, you see that? It sounds like it's hard in this angle.
Oh, Lauren, can you tell who, if anyone wants to speak, you can go ahead and speak up. I, I don't, I'm not able to see a hand.
Okay, Caitlin, Caitlin Galvin has her hand up.
Caitlin, you're unmuted, oh, there you go.
Sorry, I don't have my hand up, or at least not that I activated, sorry.
No worries. All right, so it doesn't seem like anyone has a hand up. Welcome, Mr. Massey too, Select Board Member Massey. See you there. Yeah, I mean, and if really, nothing to go over that, so why don't we go into the MBTA? Cover really there, right? Going to.
Dave, your, your floodplain zoning bylaw hearing is at seven thirty?
Right.
It's past seven thirty.
Oh, sorry, I was just thinking it was later. Yeah, let's just go right into that, sorry.
Yep, wondering where you were going.
Thanks, Lauren. Thanks for correcting me. Yeah, so, but Daniel, I'll start with you, because as you just said, I think a lot of it is just the update now, or do you want to put them off? At all, or, you know, let's desperately for the public, see the changes.
We're starting a little bit, unrelated, but you just have the maps, or anything, it's like you said, some of this stuff just goes away, too. Like some areas, you wouldn't think that, the way it's been so wet, I know, but it's actually down there, I'm off.
Yeah.
So I can just give an overview of what, why, why we're doing this. This is for the floodplain district zoning overlay. Oh, do we want to start with reading the hearing?
Yeah, we got one, excuse me. What are we reading?
The public hearing.
The public hearing notice.
It should be in the.
Yeah.
This is all.
I can read it.
You won't have it there, it should be a hot copy on the.
Yeah, this is all, all minutes, everything you gave.
Yeah.
Okay, and I got, I got the four, if I've signed, if you want.
Yeah, oh, yes, please sign.
Yep, they're all set.
Oh, there. Hearing checked.
You know, thanks.
I don't have a public meeting, no, because it's in the office.
Well, there you go. Does that make sense?
If she can't get it on the computer, I would.
Yeah, go ahead, Daniel, thank you.
Notice of public hearing. Notice here, again, and then under the provisions of MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM, in Room fourteen of the North Reading Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street, and via Zoom. By phone, for the purpose of considering amendments to Section two hundred dash forty-four floodplain districts of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws, and the overlay district map established therein, to adopt updates required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to allow the town's continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The complete text of the proposed amendments is on file and available for review online, and at the Community Planning Office at North Reading Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street, North Reading, Mass, between the hours of eight AM to four PM, Monday through Thursday, and eight AM to one PM. Just give an overview here. The proposed bylaw adopts the current requirements from FEMA in order to allow the town and its residents to remain participants in the National Flood Insurance Program and to be able to continue to access flood insurance. It makes federally required amendments to the permitting process, including the following new changes required of all communities, and these really are the major changes that are in there. Designating a position in the town as floodplain manager, and in our bylaw, we put in position of conservation agent. Requires administrative permits for any activity in the floodplain, including birth removal and storage of temporary vehicles, and that is a change for us. Retains current requirements for special permits for construction within a hundred-year floodplain. The CTC will continue to be the special permit rating we already did. Adopts new flood insurance rate maps, those final maps, oh, to be released in January, the, the letter has actually come out. I will revise that for town meeting, the, the official date on the maps will be January, sorry, July eighth, twenty twenty-five. And the final bylaw has been approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation as of January third. So this proposal for town meeting does two things. One, it proposes adopts all of the various zoning bylaw and permitting changes that FEMA requires for us to continue participating in the flood insurance program. And two, it adopts the dates of their new map panels, which are released, but become officially in effect as of July eighth, twenty twenty-five. We have six months from January eighth, twenty twenty-five, to, to put this in place and to, and to adopt them. There have been, the, the map panels were released on a preliminary basis. We have them on the website, they're no, they will be no different. So if you want me to show them or discuss any aspect of them, I can definitely do that. They have an interactive site, which is not the easiest to use. And there have been questions from residents who are curious about, am I in or am I out? And it's a little bit hard still to tell, because the aerial photographs that they have in there, it's still kind of confusing, and it's not always that easy to see versus helps. As we get closer in July, we expect them to actually release their GIS data, and when that happens, we can incorporate it into our town GIS system and, you know, MassMapper and all of the mapping systems that have that stuff on there. So people will be able to see much more clearly. There are some cases where you can definitely see it, and then there are some other instances where it's, it's kind of hard to know. The other thing I wanted to mention, actually, while we're talking about this, I can, I kind of do want me to show the interactive viewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, my screen for anyone on Zoom. Um. So down here are the actual static maps themselves. With blue areas showing the hundred-year flood zone and orange areas showing the five-hundred-year flood zone, as was previously, but these are just the new maps, and they don't show what was there before. To view what was there before, the map changes viewer this year. Well, we'll just kind of wait for that hearing. Okay, so here's a, here's an example of a flood zone area. And we have here a legend. The coastal stuff we can ignore, because we have no coastal areas. But the special flood hazard area changes, the yellow and the purple here are what we are paying attention to. The yellow areas show an increase, or a place that was not in the flood zone that is now, and the purple shows a decrease, either because it's no longer in the flood zone at all, or because it's now a five-hundred-year rather than a one-hundred-year. So in order to get a reasonable idea of this stuff, the layer list is really helpful. Checking off some of the unnecessary stuff to just see what you would like to see, preliminary changes since the last firm layer. This allows you to zoom much more easily in, to say, okay, this yellow wasn't there before, but this yellow patching, as legend tells us, is five-hundred-year floodplain. So that's not a special flood, non-special flood hazard area, except that's really the five-hundred-year, and that doesn't make a person's insurance rates, you know, change, or it doesn't require them to go. So this can be looked at all over town. It's not the easiest thing to see if it happened to be on a property where your house is under a tree or in a shadow. But as I mentioned, you know, as FEMA releases this data from actual incorporation into ours, the GIS system, and the Massachusetts GIS system, we will have a much easier time looking back. Now, just to kind of say, okay, here's the preliminary national flood hazard layer, and we're gonna put on this, this blue is, is what is shown in those maps, so it can be a little bit confusing, and I'm still working on trying to fully understand when you see something in blue, is it in or is it out, based on where these other layers are. I've been working also with our conservation agent Lydia, who recently became full-time, and so has a full-time staff person, she's been able to be our floodplain administrator. She will be really the point person for helping people understand, you know, are they in or are they out, and, and what can we do to, to try to help people understand the maps better. They also, I mean, people will continue to have the option of hiring an engineer to do a letter of map change, and that continues to really be the way that people will determine finally, if they are in or if they're out of a flood zone, if they should get flood insurance or not. We have been notified of a list of letters of map amendments that we previously had on file on the last map. And some of those properties are no longer, their letter of map change is no longer valid, or their letter of map change continues to be valid, and FEMA has said that they will just automatically renew that when the new maps come out. A number of property owners already that we know was impacted, so I'm trying to figure out the best way, and I'm gonna be working with our conservation agent too, or floodplain administrator, really, to figure out the best way to kind of communicate with residents, if, if we are aware that they will be impacted one way or another, by being in the flood zone, and how this might change for them.
So do you have a current list right now, so?
We have a partial list, and the reason we have a partial list is because FEMA has alerted us, people who previously had letters of map change in this book, and they can tell us of that list, whether people definitely are, have theirs, and they're still valid, or whether they're no longer valid, or they might need to be redetermined. But what they don't have to give us is a list of people who were never in the flood zone, who didn't have a letter of map change, who now might want to pursue one. That's what we need to probably figure out, and when we have our GIS system and the FEMA data incorporated, we will much more easily be able to target properties and figure out which ones, well, they were out before, but now it looks like they are in, or they're on the cusp, and maybe this person should, you know, look into whether they want flood insurance or not. Because the only people who'll actually be notified really will be people with a mortgage, and it can happen to not have a mortgage or a house, who may never know whether it's in your interest to buy a flood insurance, or whether you no longer need to carry it. So I think it'll be pretty important for us to communicate with people as best we can, as this information becomes more and more available to us. In the meantime, with the focus being on the, you know, the, the zoning bylaw piece of it, you know, there is information about the maps that continues to evolve, and we will continue working for instance, to help figure out, but in terms of where the actual flood zone is, I mean, that we do have on the static maps, and so we are able to, to, you know, fast time meeting to adopt those, but, I mean. Makes sense?
Your explanation is good, too.
There's a lot of breathing going on there.
And I like how the precision will get better for people, you know, when they, I mean, be referred to GIS, because I, I, I've heard the same thing. But that's even a state administered, general, not even a new place, but, and sometimes it's isolated to get the exact line.
I have a question, is it anyway, so you brought up a really good point. It's fine, you know, like, when someone has a mortgage and the bank finds out, oh, well, hey, this property is now in a floodplain, and you need to get blood insurance. Is there anything, like, how do we go about, you know, like, protecting people who don't have a mortgage? Like, how do, is it, is it our obligation to reach out, or how do we, like, just, like, informational stuff, so that, you know, there's a lot of older people here, and a lot of people in town that do own their homes outright, and they wouldn't get a letter from a bank and all that stuff, so, you know, is it our obligation, or are we, can we make an attempt to reach out?
Should. I think that once we get the data from FEMA, where we can overlay it on the town system, that will enable our GIS manager to run theories that tell us, these are all the properties that were previously not touched by the floodplain, but are now. And so we'll be able to capture a lot more properties than we're able to demo with these very, you know, isolated and not necessarily.
Yeah, they're not that great.
Yeah, and actually, we tried to, I asked our GIS manager, if he was able to just take what they had provided, and said they made it almost impossible to do that.
I was trying to find my kid's house, and I'm sorry, I think that's, I couldn't really, that was terrible.
It's really hard to see, you know, and also for some people who end up being really close, but aren't really required to have it, I mean, maybe on their own side that they want to have it. I mean, I think we have all seen areas where something flooded that wasn't necessarily quite in sight. So that'll, that, that's better for people to be informed and to know, you know, and I think it would be a really good idea for us to, and I've talked to Lydia, our conservation agent, we've talked about working with GIS to run a list, communicate with people, get a letter together, saying, you know, wanted to alert you of this, and, you know, from her perspective, anyone who does anything in the hundred-year floodplain has to file a conservation commission anyway. So it's, it's really to their, to the conservation commission's benefit to, to let people know if that's a responsibility that you have for their properties. It certainly benefits everyone, but it cuts down on people violating things without, without knowing, and then having the conservation commission after them, I mean, it's just a much easier to just tell people if they're in.
So what we do, Daniel, we send out like a, just like a generic, hey, heads up, it's coming your way, as of, you know, this date, in July, whatever. Is, is that what we do? We just send out the, the properties that we found that were actually through the data we gather? Those properties, we just send out a generic letter to all of them, or how do you?
I would probably want to have a couple of letters, one being, you know, we've noticed that you previously did not seem to be in the flood zone, but it seems that you are now. Or even just another letter that says, we noticed that even your property has been in the flood zone, we just wanted to make sure you're aware that with these new FEMA maps, that you still continue to be, and these are the things that you will need to do if you're in the flood zone. You know, I think there are going to be a couple of letters that we would craft and send to different property owners based on their situation. Or even a letter that might say, we see that you're, appear not to be in the flood zone any longer, we just wanted to alert you in case, you know, someone else tells you.
I, I know one thing, if we send out the letters telling people that they're in the flood zone now, and they need to participate in increasing their insurance with flood insurance, I hope by our list is really accurate, because if it's not, then that could just be a lot of phone calls at Town Hall, a lot of, a lot of havoc.
Tell people that they have to buy flood insurance. I think what I would say is that the information that's been provided to us by FEMA indicates that it's, it's highly likely that your property is, you may want, and you would suggest, I mean, usually what we do when people do come into our office to ask that they're in or out of the flood zone, which they do now. You know, we always suggest that if people aren't sure, that they should work as an engineer to, to really, because it's better to understand, have a property surveyed and, and understand if you're in or out, or sometimes your property is mostly in it, but the foundation of your house is out. And you don't really need flood insurance, but we, we don't really tell them they have to buy flood insurance, and they may not need to. I mean, if you don't have a mortgage.
Right, yeah.
Required to carry it anyway, so that, that is more of a personal decision.
Okay, that's good, that's more works anyways, yeah, that's great. Thanks, Daniel. I know the stats, again, I'm not sure anybody online, if there is specifically going for, or to comment on that, on the follow, you know, Caitlin Galvin and Kim Dan, and just saying your three names, because it's really other, three names other than our members and their, and Massey, so if you have anything you wanted to say on the FEMA thing. Right, so. Hearing none, I think we'll what was that, hearing? Public hearing. See, what do we get next? So I jumped to it before, and it's really the only thing on it, other than updates from the planner, we have MBTA Communities Regulation Discussion, so as many of you know, the SJC finally made the one, the long-awaited opinion on the Milton case. And been found, to no, to no surprise, at least for, for me, that the AG has the right to enforce the law, you know, and in particular this law. So I know that was one of the contentions, perhaps, of, of Milton's suit, in that I think they made the point that many of us made too, originally, I should say, that the penalty is stated in the law itself, that is, the loss of the four, at least the four original, but the four discretionary funding sources would be, if you will, the penalty, the ticket for speeding, if you will, I used to like to just simplify, but the SJC found that in fact, the S, the Attorney General does have the right to pursue or, you know, enforce the law, in addition to, or more so than just, you know, enforcing, or, or that the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities enforcing would be no grants for those four funds. So I think that was, that was helpful to get a final ruling. I don't know how many towns, you know, maybe like ours, were in that position of wanting to understand that one. I know KP lost it, that was like, you know, kind of a good point, if you remember, like, yeah, they're kind of, there's a penalty, and that's, they're kind of, why are they putting that out there? Like, if you don't do that, this is what you get, you know, and, or don't get. And so I think that, from the opinions of KP, even there was like this big question mark on that, and I think we're, what we got is, is the SJC kind of you know, making it clear that they believe that, that that is fair to do that. Think, I put, let's just write down some of the opinions on it in a second. Yeah, the eligibility for grant funding does not exclude the AG from enforcing a law, so I think that's, that's an interesting thing, item to come out of that. We also know on the, on the other side of it, the, the, the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities failed to comply with the State's Administrative Procedures Act, the guidelines, and the regs that legally and effectively must be promulgated, so because they, they weren't followed, that makes, you know, kind of the, the guidelines that, at least the U N H L C came up with, isn't only void. So what the state quickly did is filed an emergency regulation, and we got that letter here that came from KP devour, is an email actually that was sent out on Wednesday, we so the, the state filed emergency regulations that basically took effect, you know, when they filed them, but they're giving people a grace to comply. It also states that the Office, Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities still must submit non-emergency regs in accordance with the State's Administrative Procedures Act, so that, that's a process that still needs to follow suit, but at the same rate, the legal, the emergency, the emergency, sorry, regulations are what are being put into play immediately. um are being um put into play immediately. So Danielle, on the email, actually here, this is from K P Law. Now read it too, because it's kind of short and sweet really, but it came out from Nathan Carlucci. He is the down to his heading. He is the exec, I'm sorry, M B T A communities compliance coordinator for the executive office of housing of little communities. In that email that came out on Tuesday, January fourteenth last week, it says, dear M B K community officials, following information is embargoed until January fourteenth, two thousand twenty five and four P M. You're not sure this information published before that time. So I say this after that time. On January eighth, two twenty twenty five, the Massachusetts Supreme Court uh judicial court published an opinion confirming that the M B T A communities laws constitution invalid. And that the attorney general has the power to enforce it. The court also find, love that musical find. It's kind of not great. Do either it either the E O L C, the the E O H L C either can fly with the administrative procedure or they didn't. So I don't know how the opinion is that they didn't. But anyways, the court also find that the E O H L C must promulgate the laws implementing guidelines through the administrative procedures act. If they're able to be enforceable. So again, they didn't. So that was kind of a black one. Earlier today, the E O and H L C filed emergency regulations with the secretary of government, as I pointed out. Uh, the E O H L C plans to adopt emergency regulations as permanent regulations followed a public comment period, the regulations not change substantial zoning requirements affected any determinations of compliance that have been issued by E O H L C require any additional actions from municipalities that submitted district compliance applications that are currently under review. So M B T communities that did not meet prior deadlines will receive additional time to comply with the law, but must submit a new action plan within thirty days from the filing date of the emergency regulations by eleven fifteen nine P M on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. The E O H L C plans to provide letters to all M B T communities clarifying obligations under the regulations based on each municipality, community category, compliance status. Enclosing the M B T communities website will be updated today with additional information regarding regulations will continue to be updated over the coming weeks. E O H L C will also coordinate information sessions to answer additional questions. Thank you for your continued collaboration with implementing this important housing law. Sincerely, Nathan Carlucci. Um, that is uh kind of the extent of it. So um I'm just gonna open it up to just other members here first, just uh Jeff, you know, have you read all this? And like, I know the S J C's opinion came out um last week and so we're getting kind of information from that. So any thoughts, opinions?
Yeah, we're gonna go opposed.
You what?
They're all gonna go opposed. Well, that's what the state does.
Well, Dave, this this is pretty much something, this is pretty much the way I thought it would go when they, if they ran into any troubles and and we didn't know what the troubles would be, but I was pretty sure they'd find something um that needed to be fixed. And then they would just fix it with an emergency regulation, which is what they did. And so the whole thing is back on track. That's and that was the state's intention all along. They were never gonna waiver from that, so.
Yeah. So so the whatever it is, the thirty or so cities and towns that said no, at least they're keeping the state honest. Is that what you're saying, Warren?
Well, I I think what's happened now is that they've actually, they've extended everything. So so um, I I think they're gonna let every give uh everybody, the people that have been approved are still approved. I mean, it says that right in there. It's not, you know, there are some changes in the regulations, but none of them affect the people that are already uh signed up, if you will. So um, but and then, but they gave us, you know, a a timeframe to uh to go back and take a look at it and and reassess the situation. And and if we're comfortable enough with it to to reapply and and uh get ours name off the naughty list, I guess.
Yeah, Danielle, did they um, did they give any information? I mean, the action plan kind of takes us back almost like two years, you know, like when we started that. So like, did they give any any indication of when the actual deadline is? Because that's not, that's an action plan deadline, not necessarily compliance deadline.
Yeah, so let's see. If we wanna take the, I think the extension is until June or July, but if we wanna take that deadline, we have to submit an action plan by February eighteenth. Um, let me see, the actual extension ends up being
Yeah, I read through that myself. I don't have it with me right now, but I did read through it, so I remember that, so. Hmm, what do we got?
Oh, uh, for Jason. Thank you. It's in here. I'm sorry, I will find it.
Yeah, that's no problem. I'll kind of just continue. So Mr. Griffin, I didn't didn't finish. I just want to give you a second. Did you have anything else that? Um no questions?
So I do, actually. So what I'm curious is the cities and towns that did absolutely nothing. Um, because there were plenty of them. They did nothing with this. We tried to.
Oh, yeah, there's there's what you're saying is there's there's the no's and then there's the people that just ignored it.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
So so I'm just curious. Like, if you know, this went to town, town decided not to to approve this. They didn't want it. So wow. I don't think we're on naughty list. I don't think that's the way to look at it. I think we've got to look at it as that was a people's fault.
Um. We're not on the naughty, we're not on the naughty list with the town. Um, I I'd say the show up the town, but we're in the naughty list with the state.
So my thought, I know, well, whatever, I don't, whatever. We, yeah.
And that was, that was just a joke, so.
I I know, Warren, I know. I'm just playing games, but um, but it is, it is true. Like, my thought is there are plenty of cities and towns that did absolutely nothing with this law. They they didn't move one inch forward. And um, you know.
Jeff, I think they did that on purpose. I think they were waiting to see what happened.
What would what would happen if we would have just, again, through the very beginning of this, we just were looking for time to better understand it. And that's what happened. We were able to get time to better understand it. I think we're almost in the same position where you know, cities and towns have done nothing with this. At least we, you know, put our foot forward. We tried to bring it to 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 Warren article. We voted on it. We did, you know, we did all these different things for the town. That's what the town was asking us to do. So like at this point, do we? Wait. Do we learn something from this?
What I hear, what I hear you saying though, and I think, you know, it's it's true. There's a distinction between a town that went through all the proper channels, had the public hearings, multiple hearings, C P C, um select board, you know, and um, we met with select board. We obviously went through even a couple of town meetings, you know, and kicked it back and all this. So, yeah, do we get you know, internal grounding points for that, for actually doing the process? Yeah, but you're really put into the same category, in my opinion, by the state. You're either in compliance or you're not. And so you're, we're not in compliance, um, and we're more public about it, as in we voted, you know, no. Whereas the ones that are ignoring it, they've actually made no attempts. I mean, we've heard of those towns, too. They really don't even bring it up. They're just ignoring it, are choosing to ignore it, but they're just gonna be in the exact same position um where they'll be um, you know, subject to at a minimum, the the loss of those grants, which again, didn't scare off our voters in town meeting. Didn't scare me off personally either.
Right.
But definitely, you know, the litigation by um the attorney general with the with the power that the state can wield is um, and it can be expensive for a town. So I think that part, you know, brings it into a different realm now. Um, but I think all those towns are subject to whether you voted no or you ignored it. Would you agree, Mister, the vice chair, Mister Paris?
I I think you've you've, I think you've put it properly. I mean, there's there's um, I mean, there there was quite a few of them that that um, that thought that they would wait and see what happened with the Milton thing, but I don't think any of them, if you didn't read that whole Milton um um attempt to understand that that they actually were okay with the law itself. It was the requirements on it that they had an issue with and and um, and those in fact turned out to be faulty. Although nothing wrong with the actual requirements, just that the state didn't properly program them, didn't didn't put them through the proper channels, which is what they did with the emergency order now to to catch up. So I mean, I mean, the state is really serious about this and I I don't know that uh, uh, you know, um, I don't know that they're gonna back away from it at all in in any way. It seems like they're just gonna keep moving forward. But there were people that were waiting to see what happened. I mean, you don't blame them. They let somebody else fight the battle and then and then you see where you stand. And you may see after this uh decision by the by the Supreme Court that you, there there may be a few of them more say, well, we better get our acting gear. But I I can't, I read through this, but I don't remember. I can't remember what the final drop dead date was as far as the extension goes. You have to go back from it.
So Danielle's still looking, and that's okay, Danielle. I'm not putting any pressure on you.
I think I found it.
Oh, you found it, maybe?
I found it, maybe. July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
That sounds right.
July fourteenth, page eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, so page eighteen for the public, July fourteen, you say?
Yeah, that's yeah, July fourteen, twenty twenty five.
Five, they're mine. Okay. So like FEMA map or FEMA maps is six months. All right.
We we basically have the thing on the shelf, if you will. So, you know, and but aside from reviewing the the new uh regulations to make sure that there's no changes needed, you know, we don't really have much of a road hole here. So um, other than.
I tend to, I, the one thing I agree, Mr. Paris, is that a lot of people in the no's um at the town meeting uh were in the, let's wait and see, you know. Um, and although we are told by everyone that this decision would come down well after the end of the year, which it did. Um, it didn't seem to hurt anybody, you know, the town, there's no, they're giving everybody the opportunity now to get back in. So I think everyone at least was in that court, but yet all a no is a no, but um, I think.
The big thing, Dave, that happened with the town meeting thing is it gave us an idea with everybody's objection, where we gained a lot of knowledge, what what people wanted to know from that meeting. So there was no wasted time there.
Yeah, and again, the no's, it's not like a, it's not a monolithic group of opinion with the no's. They they have a range, right? It's it's people that hide away, whatever. So um, what that'll look like now is different, maybe. Um, given that people now have been granted what they were asking for, which is a ruling from the S J C on the Milton case.
Right.
So I think that's interesting and needs to sink in a little bit. Um.
But it also gave us the opportunity to take all of the objections and present with the town council to see if any of them were were legitimate or if they were, you know, not not realistic.
Yeah. Yeah, we learned a lot from that time where it started.
We did.
January, um, I know we, so uh, I just want to go still around. So are you, do you have anything I want to like drop, drop to you before I go on, Mister Shan here and then Mister Murphy.
I still, Warren, and I know we talked about this a million times, I still, I'm still looking at where is the housing crisis? And where is it coming from? Where is it being driven from? And and I think the town, the people kind of voted, a lot of people voted in that way, too. Like, they they're trying to see like, you know, this this housing crisis that that supposedly all have to try to figure out, chip into or whatever the state's master plan is. I think that because there were so many cities and towns that did take a stand vote now and because there were so many cities and towns that just can down the road, I still think that this is, I don't think it, again, I'm gonna say, I don't think it's a good law. I think it's um I just think that especially the people in this town, they don't want to entertain, don't want it. Um, however, this all kind of ashes out and falls into place in this emergency housing crisis. You know, our legislature, I think, just in my opinion, I think they're just railroading the public. I just don't. I don't. I look at it like their problems falling on our back. You know, or they're they're creating problem or whatever you want to call it. They're, you know, ignored problem um of housing. But you know, when I look at some of the statistics of, you know, what, thirty eight thousand families left Massachusetts last year? I I just, I can't see it. I just think it's bad. I think it's bad law. I still think it's bad law. Um, I don't think it has the the interest of the people in this town. People in this town um just don't want. That's my, that's my take.
Well, Jeffy, I I can say that if you ever had, if you ever had been on a board when one of these forty Bs came through, which which were just a small project with the forty B, but the objections to it were huge. And if it wasn't for the forty B situation, you know, some of these things would never have got built because so it, you're exactly right. People do not necessarily want this law. They don't want all a whole bunch of people added to their town, not just our town, but any town because of all of the strain on infrastructure as well as personnel. So 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 you're absolutely correct, but but um, unfortunately, because the forty B thing didn't give them the 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 results they were looking for. This is, this is where they've gone.
I know, and I just, again, I just, I I can't personally see of a housing crisis like the state's painting and 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 putting us in billions of dollars worth of debt. And and all the stuff that we're gonna have to pay for. I just I don't see it, especially with, you know, that many families left. So I don't know. I just can't get it in my head, Warren. I don't know.
I know, uh, but I've I've been through some of the battles with the forty Bs and the objections and you you would be uh, you'd be right on board with that, I guarantee it.
On the forty B, I get it. That was targeted for a specific purpose. Nineteen sixty six. Right, yeah. I I know, and that's the problem. Like, I get it. But to 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 go out, that's why I say our legislature, I I just think they did a terrible job. And this, you know, I just don't think that this was something where they should have just blanketed the state. I still feel that way. I just don't think you know, some towns, you know what? They opened their arms, they hugged it, embraced it. Great, good for you. Good. That's great. But, you know, a town like us, they 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 didn't want it. They don't want it. The emergency it it to me, it just, I look at it like they create, okay, well, so what emergency? I I show me the emergency. I don't see it. Where is it, Warren? I don't know where it is.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess you you would have to look at, I I think the things that they quote and uh maybe, and and Danielle can correct me if I'm wrong, but they they spend a lot of time uh stipulating the the city, like the city of Boston and in the surrounding communities, the housing is way, way overpriced. And so the 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 um, the housing crisis is that not just that there isn't a house there, but it but it's a half a million dollars for a house that nobody can afford the rent that that works in the city of Boston. So there's no no affordable housing. They don't put the word affordable out there, but that's, I think, what the real intent is. Um, is that there's no, that that they would be more workers available if there was a housing they could afford. One of the problems you're under is a lot of these well-heeled communities, uh, you you find out that their police and firemen live in another adjoining community because where they can afford to live. And and um, that's not, that's not always the best thing, you know?
I'd love to live in Hawaii. I can't afford it, so I'm not going to Hawaii. That's just the way it is, you know?
Well, the commute would take forever, though.
Well, we we move around. If you can't afford to live in this community, you're buying in that community. That's just the way it goes.
Yeah.
You know, I I don't get it. I I just don't think it's, I think it's a terrible law. And I I've expressed it to to um you know, our reps. And I just, I just don't think it's fit. Some communities, great. If they want to embrace it, let them go for it. If some don't want it, then that shouldn't be their choice and prerogative. But the state's just gonna ram this thing down and and, you know, uh, with no real incentive. And again, the forty B element is to, it's totally different. They're saying it's a housing crisis. We have an emergency and, you know, uh executive order or whatever they want to call it. And it's like, I don't know, maybe I'm just in a funnel somewhere and I can't, I just can't see that emergency. And I wish I could. I wish someone could bring it to me and show it to me because I don't know where it is. And I don't know how our legislature and the people who vote for these people should be be taking a double stance and looking back at this going, you know what? That was a crappy law you put together. Look at all the hardship you put on all these cities and towns that wanted nothing to do with it. Now, it's you and you people that 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 put this together. And now we we have to eat that because of that. You know, I would hope that the people, next time they go to the ballot box, they try to figure that one out. I hope we don't, well, anyways, you know, not happy.
Yeah. Mister Shan? Mr. Shan, you have any opinions?
Um, yeah, well, one, I don't think the the state's gonna look at us one way or the other, whether it's we voted it down or we did some of the other communities and didn't do it. At all, and I think the state's gonna make a distinction there, they're just gonna say you're not compliant. Um, but I mean, I think, I was at that meeting, I think the vote was pretty overwhelming. It wasn't like it was a sweeper of a vote, the town seemed to be uh pretty dramatic on one side. You know, and I haven't heard any really outcry to the residents to wanna have any desire to pick it up again. And it's, you know, and I I agree, I don't think it's a shortage of housing, I think it's a cost of housing and. I I just, you know, you you keep seeing houses getting builder built everywhere or or whatever condos going up. The the price, anytime a new condo goes up, the prices aren't going down. I just don't see this driving down. Uh, a price, no matter what, you know, what point gets put up. And I I just think if those before the people again, they're gonna look at it the same way, it's just gonna really. Uh, you know, tax town services, police, fire, schools, and I just think it's. Made pretty clear to us, well, pretty clear when I was sitting there, that I'm just telling them what to do, I just don't see. Yeah, you know, another boat passing, I just, I don't see an appetite out there in the town of all this.
Hello, you, uh, Mr. Murphy. Any opinions on it?
Yeah, I mean, I uh, I agree with everything that's been said by both parties, I think that for now at least, you know, um. You know, I don't think that the the minds of the townspeople is necessarily gonna change, I think. For now at least, until we begin to see any, you know, negative economic incentives because of the decision we made. Uh, until we see that, I I don't see anything changing, I think right now it's it's not worth reevaluating. I I do think that as we move forwards into the future and we look at, you know, some of the larger projects that we wanna accomplish in terms of water. In terms of our ten year plan, development along twenty eight and things, uh, if this really genuinely starts to hamper. Development because we're no longer able to access, you know, grants and things, maybe it's worth reconsidering. But right now, I think there's still a lot more to learn and a lot more to find out, and you just take time to uh let it pan out, um, and I think that's what we're doing.
And then, uh, Mr. Paris. How to do comments and anything else?
I'm all, I'm all set, I mean, I I. As I said, this is the way I pretty figured it would it would play out, um, but it it is, it is, and it it is inevitable. The people that voted this, the, we voted for the people that are in our legis, in our state legislature and they voted for this law, so a law is a law. And that's uh, that's kind of the way it is.
Yeah. I think and and for me, and then I'll open up the public, but um, I think, you know. We, you you kind of referenced, it's a good reference, it's like the forty B one and people talk about that, and that was fifty eight years ago. That that law was passed and, you know, it's been implemented here and there, as we know, in this town and other towns, but. You know, they up up until just two years ago, when twenty one, um, with the MBTA Communities Act. Enhancing three or three A, they were letting towns kind of develop the way the town sees fit, um. And um, I just think what is concerning to me. Is that just, you know, again, fifty eight years and also now in the last, you know, two or three years, we have two major laws. The Affordable Homes Act in August that basically, in a way, you know, makes by right, that basically is mandating eighteen years. And all three hundred and fifty, you know, towns and cities in Massachusetts, when they might not want them. And now it's just a right and they're not only trying to just tip the dip the toe in, they're saying it's detached, attached. Um, you know, doesn't have to be owner occupied, like, it's just wide open, Wild West, A two. Um, so that's how much respect they have for the citizens of Massachusetts that. They don't believe that we have the ability to govern and come up with our own planning in our towns, that they have to jam it down our throes. And they obviously demonstrated that with the communities, I mean, the MBK's Community Act. Which at least was letting you come up with your own thing, you know, and it's almost like that law was a little bit more cooperative in a sense.
Yeah.
That's you come up with something. This one's a real rammed down, so what I guess I'm getting at and then I'll shut up is what's next, you know, I mean, is there another law coming down? I mean, there are already, you know, two for three here in the last three years, is there another one? So, cause we're not compliant enough. And so the people that were yeses maybe in October. I mean, at what point do you push back, like, on your own town, like, you paid a lot of money to move to North Reading, or perhaps you've lived here your whole life. And you grew up in a farming town like my wife, and it's changed a lot and change happens, but. Don't you have any right to see how your town, you know, to see how your town grows? Um, and when it just becomes the state can just make every town the same? Yeah, I just have a problem with that, you know, and I just think that seems to be what the top, the state is indicating they're they're willing to do. Is start passing more and more laws if we're not, if we're not. You know, compliant enough with for for them, so that's that's what I find concerning. If you were, if you were told this will be the last one for another fifty eight years, you might just go, okay, I get it. But you just don't know what's coming next, you know, and we even said that, by the way. We said that during the MBT one and what happened in August, the Affordable Homes Act, you know, so sure enough, we were right. They're gonna pass another law. Um, but anyways, I'll uh, that's my opinion, I made it before, so, uh, open it up to the public. Um, anybody raising hand, just speak up again, we have the same kind of group of people, so. I don't think you're really gonna talk over anybody if you wanna just speak up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, so. Last week is last week, um, the governor or not exactly who. The 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 issue with the safety equipment grant award was officially denied. For towns that did not or were not in compliance. Um, which I, which I kind of found, kind of kind of found interesting, um, because of the the four that. Representative Jones talked about, we were the only one who weren't in compliance. Um, at the meeting that Brad Jones and Senator Tar attended before the vote. They made it quite clear, um, to the people who were there, that the state was not going to back off. Um, and that if it anything, they were going to make it more restrictive, so as I understand it. The town has thirty days to submit a plan. Are you planning on doing that?
Not sure if we can give a definitive answer to right tonight, Jim, but it's, again, we just, I'm just getting this email. Um, today, this this was just put it on, I don't know, into our care file, so. Again, I think you can appreciate that, I mean, you know, and I'm I'm not, uh, I have nothing to, I've always been opposed to this law. And um, I made it pretty clear on the October one, but I'm also pragmatic to to some degree. Um, even in the face of this, uh, I don't like getting pushed around by the state or any state, but, you know, I tend to agree with. Our representatives, um. And they're certainly very much in the minority, when, you know, their vote does not even matter, really, that's what's kind of sad. I mean, which means our vote doesn't matter really, but.
So so let's be, let's be honest, though, they both voted for it. Um, I I understand they both had had stated that it went further than they thought it was going to. But come, but coming out of COVID, that 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 economic development bill that came out of the legislature, which this was in, they voted for it. Um, there was, there was virtually, there was virtually nobody who voted against it.
Mr. Gannon, they made it clear at this select board meeting and then in other conversations with the same representatives. It was kind of like the omnibus bill thing where it's tucked in there, they didn't really know what it really entailed, so. I I won't get in an argument with you on that, you could be right, but from what I'm just saying, my impression was that they were surprised by what was in it. And and I don't think anybody in this meeting or online right now would be surprised that our representatives are not all aware of everything that's in a bill.
Sure.
It's used to be a con.
Sure, and 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 sort of, I don't wanna, I don't get into debate, I I I I. I guess my question would be, are we going to um submit a plan? Um, I I don't know, I sat in the room when the vote was taken. Um, quite honestly, there was a small number of people, um, although compared comparatively. And I think, you know, they all had a stake in in in. What they believed in, um, and I don't think those folks are gonna change their mind, um. I I don't know, I and I I just think there was many of the sixteen thousand people in this town who weren't there. Um, voters, the fifteen thousand who who registered to vote weren't there, cause I don't know why, they just weren't, so.
Yeah, well, Jim, Jim, there's a, uh, we we actually, you know, the 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 application that we had before was pretty much complete. And other other than, you know, just, um, you know, reviewing it to make sure that the any changes in the guidelines don't affect the application that we had. Um, it it's kind of on the shelf, it's kind of ready to go.
So we'll, 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 I I asked the question at the town meeting, if um the CPC votes no. Um, will there need to be an additional vote of yes, and I believe the answer was yes. And it will need, and it will need to be within two years, and it will need to be a two thirds yes, is that still true?
Um, I have to, um, yeah, go ahead.
Look, I was gonna say, we're we're the only, we're the only ones that can bring this back, cause it was voted no. So, yeah, I think that's what you're saying, Jim, so I mean, by saying, by voting no in October, it it's dead for two years. That, but we can bring it back, the select board, isn't that correct, Danielle, I believe?
With a positive recommendation from the CPC.
It could come back, so that's that's one, just try to be correct about stuff, and then, um. But I'm trying to think this through, so I think we just fall back or it falls back to kind of like the clocks reset in the sense of. There's a submission of an action plan now, this whole thing's been reset, and then you have this July deadline fourteen. Um, and then it just goes back into, and I guess you technically would need to vote. You know, at the June town meeting, maybe, you know, right, or something like that, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of where we're at, so. All all say, Jim, is just for me as a chair, I'm I'm not gonna, I'm gonna, I have an open mind and I wanna. Try to do the best thing for the town, just like I did in October, and at that time, not having any decision by the SJC. Um, knowing that there was a fair amount of towns also feeling the same way and voting those. I I felt like we were in a good position and clearly I didn't misjudge that, I mean, here we are in January, we're being given another six months. To consider it, so, um, you know, no foul, I guess, but but. I I just want you to know, I have an open mind to it, um, I don't wanna cause any harm to this, to the town. You know, that's certainly not where I'm coming from, I'm just not.
Thank you, I'll I'll stop talking.
No, no, I'm the, I'm the one that won't stop talking, Jim, you're you're, you should, you have an open mic here, anytime you want to come to the meeting.
Thank you.
Jim, anything else, and I'll just, you know, just ask if anyone else wants to speak too, because you've obviously been patient, been online. Full meeting, so anybody like I seen Caitlin and Dick, anything, you guys wanna add anything?
Um, I think you answered, I think you answered my question, my question was. Would you explore the possibility of bringing this up at June town meeting? I understand kind of a thought process that it may not make sense at this point in time, but are you would be kind of gonna go through the. Kind of thought process and see if there's an appetite for it in town.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's correct, Caitlin, that's that's where I'm at. Again, I'm just one of the.
And a quick review of the rate and the new regulations or the updated regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna try to learn a lot in, um, like the email that came out Tuesday said, there's, there's, they're gonna be upload loading things. And we're gonna find out maybe a little bit more, I imagine too KP Law will have some kind of like update, right? Um, cause they have numerous towns that are in the same position as us.
The next scene was the one that I brought in Congress by email last week before, um, that was really just to say that the regulations would need to be submitted.
Yeah.
Um, which then they were, and the difference, so the red line changes are actually in the share file. It's just the deadlines.
Right.
So there really is not anything different right now, um, and I don't think there's one to be. So I think that we would just be in a position now making a decision, if there's something you want me to do by that February thirteenth deadline. In terms of submitting an action plan, I'll do it, otherwise, no, um.
I do have another question, sorry. So, um, at at the same, at the same meeting, um, the 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 combined meeting, there was a discussion of. Um, a couple of amendments to protect, if you will, um. The the current development at at Martin's Landing, um, I noticed, I noted that those, there were no off, I I don't know what happened between that meeting and. The town meeting, but I know that there were no amendments offered, is that still? I mean, I I I get, everyone does, gets the 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 uh. Fear, um, and and concern, particularly of the folks at Martin's Landing and Eisenhower, but. Um, so I guess my question is, is 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 the plan and or amendments to the plan that would protect. Um, you know, can't go higher than this, or, you know, can't, those kinds of things, is that still a possibility for for a June meeting as well?
Well, I would say, though, if it would make sense to explore those, because again, when we get back to the, what are the, what were the no's? What the, what what were all the no's, there are people that wanted to wait till the Milton here, and there's other people that, again, had. Um. Had fears of what could happen at Martin's Landing and they, and perhaps again. And I remembered some of those, um, talks of those amendments being brought up. You know, perhaps that's enough for those types of people, if you put this in, then I'm I'm now a yes, you know. And and then also with the information from the SJC's ruling, so. I think that's what we have to do is get the, get the temperature of everybody and find out, um, if those amendments also. Um, change people's opinion, and Danielle, um, do you remember, like, what was, one of them was. Because it also, just to back up to, the reason why, like, and I I remember Warren saying this, if it was just Edgewood in there. It would, this thing would be a little easier, and then so when ruined Martin's Landing, you had a lot of opposition kind of instantly from that. So the the amendment was to do what, was it, what was it precisely doing?
About, almost to put language in there that just comes right out and says that, um, age restricted housing is allowed. Cause there is nothing in the law that says we couldn't have age restricted housing, it's just that it couldn't be required. So for for us to put language, I don't think some council thought it would be a problem for us to say that. That Martin's Landing or that any on the development could continue to be restricted, that was one. Um, the other amendment that we talked about was the potential of capping the total number of units, um, that could be developed. In that zone district, um, at the maximum amount that we were, you know, that that we actually already have permitted for. That that was another.
And town council approved those because neither one of them had any major effect on the, on the, on the uh bylaw.
I just didn't go ahead with any of those amendments because the general feeling uh was was more toward no rather than amending and then passing. So we never really got to a place where we were.
Well, so we just kind of had these, these articles, remember, they got passed over in June and they went into October, so we just were sticking purely to the articles. In a way, you know, so we weren't introducing other amendments and stuff.
Okay.
But, you know, now, now maybe that's an opportunity, um, that. To protect the area, I mean, you 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 have to remember, again, this is coming from a no person, you know, I'm I'm one of the no's and I, you know. One of the leaders of the pack, but. The the two parcels that that Danielle put together are. If you can protect Martin's Landing especially are are really, you know, and I've said it before and in the June meeting. They're kind of layup parcels, like, we're getting a lot easier with those parcels in the in the proposal that we put forward, so. If we can protect ourselves a little bit more with amendments or whatever, you know. Um, and I know others have brought up those amendments too in other meetings, both in Judy and October, but. Why not explore, you know, because you're 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 looking down the barrel of the state and the power of what they can do. And you have to be real about that, it's like trying to like, I'm not gonna pay my taxes. You know, good luck with that, yeah, and I mean, that's, unfortunately, I feel like that's where we're kind of at right now, you know. And gotta be realistic about a lot of this, this stuff, so, um. I'm, I'm not thinking this lightly and I definitely gonna think through it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We had one other person, again, Dick, I don't know if you wanted to say anything. Just calling you all because you're the only one that has it, or you have Mr. Massey on there too, and Nick, if you wanted to say anything.
Hey, Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, I just wanted to say, um, I, I think the Attorney General, I, I'm, I'm with you on that, um. The Attorney General has, has yet to answer, you know, why, why this law, and I, I know Mr. Pierce, he noted. A law is a law, I'm, I'm still waiting to hear. You know, why, why the people have to vote on this law specifically, but, um, that's obviously another. Conversation for another day, um, my, my one question was just gonna ask. Um, what happens after the ninety days? I know the emergency. Is ninety days, what happens because between now? And I'm, I'm asking because I, I don't know either, this is, this is all new stuff. Um, but what happens, obviously ninety days runs out between now and June regardless.
Generally, what happens, Nick, is there's a, uh, this is a, a comment period. Ninety days comment period where, where you can, uh, uh, read everything and send comments and. And at the end of ninety days, if there's no major changes, it just becomes law, no, no longer an emergency law, but a law.
And the, and the, are they were still required to go through? The process that kind of came out of that, that suit that, hey, you gotta follow. Different rules and procedures, do they still?
That's what they do right now, they went through those, they went through and they filed everything the way they were supposed to have the first time. And, and, but they made it an emergency, uh, because that gets them around the, uh. Um, um, there's a long drawn out section of it. And, uh, and, but it still provides a, a comment period, um. Before the law becomes, before it becomes, you know, cast in stone, if you will.
Yeah.
Thank you. They've, they've done that within, and some of the stuff that I've done, they've, uh, we've had laws where they've done that. They've made it emergency law, and that's generally what it is, allows a ninety day comment period, and then at the end of that time, it's cast in stone.
Understood, understood, thank you.
Yep.
Um, one last, anybody else, um, important?
I do, just the last.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and if you want to discuss this at our next meeting on February third, we can do that too. Um, but I did want to ask you, because we only have one meeting left prior to that February thirteenth deadline, um, to think about whether you want me to submit anything. At that line, um, that doesn't mean that we're approving it, it just means. Like we did last time, submit an action plan, stay in compliance, and then explore the possibility, tell me, if you want me to, to submit this as an action plan. I will, if you don't want me to do that, then I won't, just, just. Just need to let me know.
I think, in what my opinion on that, I'm open to others on it, is, um, to respect your time in that you do other things. Um, for you to just, you know, grab the package that was previously and kind of put on the bows and other things to it. Dates change and get it so that it's in a ready state. I don't think that, I think that makes a lot of sense to do that, because it's probably in my right, not that much work, but it should just, we shouldn't be last minute in you with it, is my point. So if you have just the, you can make sure that one is ready. And then it'll be up to not, you know, not just me, but I think a lot of people's, like, Lord, I, I, I mentioned that a lot of people's opinions on this, but isn't it? Isn't it because we passed over it and up to this board to move forward here?
Yeah, period, yeah, period, okay. Well, and the, yeah, I'm, and I'm, I'm sure there's other ways and give. Parliamentary and entering the, the, uh, the room here. Town administrator.
Why did they finish up then on the hall?
Are they, yeah. So, um, and Danielle, and, and unless, uh, our town administrator, what, um, what are the other methods by which if, if the select. I mean, the CPC doesn't move it forward, is there any other way to move it forward?
Well, I mean, a couple of ways we can talk about moving it forward, um, the first step, though, if we have any interest in, um. Taking advantage of potentially complying by July, um, the first step would be submitting something to the state by the thirteenth. Whether or not that's the plan that ends up getting voted on or not discussed or completely dropped or passed over, whatever the actual, if that plan isn't binding, it's just the actual plan. That they are asking for as an invitation. Just like. Um, I'm happy to put that together if you want me to, and then hold off on submitting it, um, as far as who. Makes the decision, as the CPC members decided to submit that, um. The first time around, I think it was two years ago now, and we let us left board know, um, at the time, the, the, the feeling on compliance was different, so. If you want to. Decide with the select board whether that's an appropriate next step, um, that's. As far as who has the right to, you know, go ahead and decide on behalf of the town that we're submitting a compliance plan, probably. Makes sense. Yeah, I'm anxious to see if you agree.
What we're kind of getting from, from what I'm getting from you though, is. The submission of the action plan by the deadline is not necessarily. An, an act by the CPC, um, but the actual. Voting for, say, in June would be something that we have to agree to move it to the town meeting.
So.
Because it sounds like we're the only ones that can bring it back, right?
Well, if we want to bring back the same plan, the same zoning proposal that came back prior, prior, you know, and, and was voted dead. Then the CPC would need to give a positive recommendation to town meeting in order for that vote to take place. If the CPC wanted to bring a completely different plan. Or if somebody else wanted to bring a different plan. The CPC wouldn't necessarily have to vote in favor of that. Um, it's just the repeat petition within two years, the CPC would just need to give positive recommendation, but anyone could bring it forward, I mean, any courts who normally. Request, you know, the, the select board if they wanted to, but without a positive recommendation from the CPC, it's the same plan, town meeting really can't.
Right. What if it's the same, similar, but with the amendments, is that considered the same plan?
I don't know how different it has to be, I think it has to be.
I would think they.
It has to be different enough, I don't really think it could be the exact same thing, with a couple of small details changed, I think it does have.
Yeah. That's helpful. Okay. Um, but yeah, Danielle, like, like I said, I, I do think it's, it's, it's smart just for you at least to have. Something, um, that they're ready, so again, it's not a last minute thing for you.
Okay, and then in terms of making the decision about submitting that action plan or not, um, just looking ahead, I just wanted.
February third, you said it's next.
No, I'm sorry, February four is the next meeting, yeah, that's Tuesday. Um. It's the left board's meeting schedule though, I believe their next meeting is now.
Maybe.
Maybe the third. So if you there is interest of having a discussion between the two groups about it and making a decision together, then we probably could want to target. Those days.
Really, I want to get, you know, for the February third meeting, you know, public input, you know, almost have, make sure it's on the agenda. It, it, you know, it's, I wish they gave people a little bit more time, but again, here we are, you know, well past the deadline, which was the end of the year. So, um, and, and here, you know, you're giving, you're being, all these towns not compliant or wanted, haven't, haven't. Uh, responded or, or given essentially a seven month extension, you know, so. It is an extension, but it doesn't give us a lot of time to meetings.
It doesn't, and then if we pass that February thirteenth deadline, then that essentially just, it goes away, it ends.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, um, oh, just, let's, let's schedule it for the. On the agenda for the board and. We'll, we'll have to have some conversations with a lot of people in town, I think, the next few weeks. Once you do, you know, but that's why I said, have it, have something ready.
It is also possible to submit something and where it's not binding. And just say, you know, over the next few weeks, we have a couple of other meetings, we're hearing people that they really don't like this, and. We're not gonna bring it to town meeting, because the warrant would be closed until March.
Right.
We have, we have time to decide whether there's, we want to actually take the next action on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That action plan is more like a keep us in compliance.
Right, you're actually, you're right, we voted no with an action plan, so. In October, effectively, a two year old action.
So, I mean, I want to recognize too, that where this person you like sign was voted down at its own meeting. Making the decision to submit the same action plan to the state without understanding how the rest of the town does, but I understand.
Yeah, I appreciate, I, I appreciate you putting it that way, because I see it differently now, I, I know what you mean, like, it might be just. Prudent to put it in, but you know, it's still up to the CPC as well as moving it forward into town meeting, like giving people the opportunity again. Vote on it, whatever, okay, all right. Yeah, I think about that. All right, that's, that's fairly helpful, I appreciate everybody's, um, input. Small, small meeting, but, uh, valuable input from everybody online as well, I appreciate it. Got a lot of, any, uh, why don't we, uh. Wrap that, but any, any, uh, later updates, Danielle?
Sure, a couple of things, um, Thursday, just want to remind you, that's the informational hearing on Warren articles at seven fifteen, I will be there, um, in case of, or if you want to attend, I did post it to you, you may notice, um, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's on Thursday?
Thursday at seven fifteen.
Um, your office?
I'm sorry, no.
Mikes.
Um, the, uh, for the night of town meeting, I know you've already taken all the votes on recommending articles, do you want me to post a pre-meeting? Prior to the town meeting starting?
I don't think one's necessary since we already did that and. Yeah, okay. You'll, you'll have, uh, like you talked about earlier, you'll put a presentation on that. Um, yeah, no, it doesn't, right? Yeah, I think we're good, yeah, we're good, I see it's, yeah. Small meeting, not beating. Articles. Yeah, there's nothing, they were like seven or six articles or something? My, how many articles are on?
Seven.
Seven, okay. So three, three is sponsored by us? Yeah.
And I'll, um. Put those couple of things into the presentations that you mentioned, you know.
Yeah, why we're here.
What's that?
Why we're here.
Exactly, why, yeah, why we're here today. Um, okay, and I, I'll, I'll put that in the share file too.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just wanted to mention that Wilmington project that I put in there, that's just FYI, um, they are coming back in, um. To the town of Wilmington for another approval for Agent and Saleon Street, just because there's. Whatever sign that they're getting, it's the same use, but they are anticipating a little bit more traffic generation than originally thought. So they, Wilmington has asked them to have it approved again by their, uh, their planning board, and they're just providing us the information, their hearing is February. Fourth, I think they sent in their, uh, information, so if anyone wanted to submit anything or ask me to submit anything.
Silly, perhaps silly question, but, and I did read through the whole, you know, all the documents for that, are we? Kind of similar to like the ZBA, do they want any comments from us, or is it just more a courtesy showing us?
It's a courtesy.
Yeah. There's a one comment I would have, that I don't know if it's. You know, they're good, they should be doing this, but with the two directional signs that they're gonna have. Their bye bye for, they're a pretty good sized sign that would be at an exit, you know. Is just make sure it doesn't block sightlines, and I'm, I'm assuming. That planning board would look at that, you know, but. That's what I would just be concerned with, because that's a tough street, as everyone knows, and then putting up the two signs that they're asking for, not the monument. Um, also the monument sign, I guess, could be a problem, but definitely the ones at the entrances, they should definitely. Be mindful of that, but. Sure they will. If that's all they're looking at too, they're not being asked to look at a lot of stuff, right, it's really just the increased traffic, those three signs and that's it.
It's a really minor change.
Yeah, so I'm sure they're all aware of that.
I can mention it to them. About the fishing.
Because it does impact us. Through some down Winter Street, we don't want to start it out, I mean, running.
Um. Not to bring back the fishing community again, but because that open comment period is going on, if there is anything that you think of that you would like me to submit. On behalf of CPC, um, it's essentially the same. You know, regulation that was before, but I'm not going to write any comment, I, I would just.
Good.
Then, uh, David, we brought up the possibility of moving our meeting time up slightly, at least for the winter months, to seven rather than seven thirty, I just thought I would ask if that was something that you would like to consider.
I raised it with Danielle, but I didn't want to, you know, well, what time do the girls get out of daycare? It has nothing to do.
That's the real question.
I am advanced dad, yes, uh, no, but I, I brought it up just because it, in the, it seems like we're waiting around for the meeting. And then the public hearings are at eight, it's actually getting late, but it was just a thought, if, if it's not good for anyone. Uh, it, it's, the CPC's been meeting at seven thirty for a long time, so I wouldn't want to change precedent, but, uh, maybe it's, if everyone's okay with it, we can do that, just give it a. A try, you know, and move back. That's fine, Warren, are you okay with that, because I know Warren, especially in the summer months, Warren, the firework months, the.
Yeah, I work kind of late sometimes, so seven thirty usually, if seven thirty gives me enough time to get home for a few minutes, you know, so usually that's, uh.
Well, when is, when is your season really kicking, Warren, like, would you be on board with trying it out in the winter here with the?
Yeah, yeah, we could try, yeah, we could try it out in the winter, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that, as long as everybody's okay, are you good, yeah, we were talking earlier, so you're good with it, yeah, hello Max? Yeah, Max, you good?
Yeah, I have no objections, that sounds great.
Max, does that help you with your scout stuff, you know, or is it, doesn't matter?
Uh, no, definitely, uh, it doesn't help, but I don't mind.
All right, well, no, so you're meeting, because when, do you have just an earlier meeting, is that what happens with you on?
Well, scouts is every Tuesday, you know, and the assistant scout master every Tuesday from seven to eight thirty. So, you know, with, with this really, it's like. You know, when it was seven thirty, it was at St. Teresa's, so I'd stop by just to like, you know, check on things, but it's no big deal, I still make two a month and it, I don't mind.
You just gotta work in a CPC meeting with the scouts, you know, they can all sit in the audience.
Oh, yeah, they, they would love that.
Yeah.
I don't mind.
Our next meeting, I'll host for seven, we'll stand and post.
Good deal. Good deal. Can always run a winter summers together, yeah, anything else?
No.
All right. Yeah.
Just to you and Warren, we want to.
Yes, you, you said that time of year, you said that, so when is that due back? Whether, okay, yeah, I'll get with Warren, we'll make sure. Okay, yeah, thanks for reminding, okay. All right, I will close the meeting. What time we have, nine o'clock on the nose, talks about efficiency and government. Or lack of participation, one or the other. All right, thanks, everyone. All right, thanks, everyone.